Time to 16, Council of City of Denison, now convenient to the regular council meeting. Let's start with an invocation. Father God, we thank you for today and we certainly lift up the families and the first responders in Moore, Oklahoma, as they again are dealing with natural disasters in that area of the state. Pray that you'll bring comfort to those that need you from comfort or strength to those that are working tirelessly in that event. And Father, we pray for this council as we serve matters of the city that you would provide wisdom and again that we seek after you for guidance as we move this community forward. In Jesus' name, Amen.
Blessings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item 3B, election of Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Vican, real quick, I'll make a motion for appointment of new Mayor Pro Tem, but I would like to say thanks to the council, I've served this last year as Pro Tem and it's been a real privilege and honor to serve and I'm thankful you guys allowed me to do that and really appreciate the opportunity. It really is a privilege. With that said, I'll make a motion to appoint Councilman David Spindel as Mayor Pro Tem.
Second. Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Beck, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Janet, that was your first chance to vote against us.
David, you ready for that?
Yes. Hi David Spindel, I solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Denison, Texas and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state.
Congratulations, Councilman Beck. I look forward to serving with you again and certainly congratulations Scott for joining the crew. Thank you for your willingness to serve Denison. Now Agenda item 3B, election of Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Vican, real quick, I'll make a motion for appointment of new Mayor Pro Tem, but I would like to say thanks to the council, I've served this last year as Pro Tem and it's been a real privilege and honor to serve and I'm thankful you guys allowed me to do that and really appreciate the opportunity. It really is a privilege. With that said, I'll make a motion to appoint Councilman David Spindel as Mayor Pro Tem.
Second. Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Beck, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We're going to move Agenda item 5E, public hearing on the NTRZ zoning ordinance first because it's quick and get some of the room out of the room with the storms coming. So Agenda item 5E, Ms. Brockin.
Is this the North Texas Regional Airport?
It is.
Mayor and council, we're here tonight to receive a report and hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance for the North Texas Regional Airport. The land use compelled in zone ordinance submitted by Mike Shaheen, Airport Director. This ordinance adoption will protect the public from adverse effects of air noise, ensure that people and facilities are not concentrated in areas susceptible to accidents, ensure that no structure encroach upon or adversely impact the use of navigation airspace, restrict or limit activities that cause electronic or visual impairment of aircraft, restrict or limit activities that attract wildlife hazards. This ordinance does not specify what land uses are permitted, only land uses that are not permitted. This board will consist of nine members, two members of each city and three members appointed by Grayson County Commissioners Court. The cities are Denison, Sherman and Pottspur. This ordinance, get that on the board, the portion that says zoning in your packets, each one of you have the packet in front of you and if you turn the next last page, not the chart, but the zoning districts, it'll show you Zone A and Zone B.
Is there a page in on the face?
Three A. It's next to the last page on the maps.
Five and six pages to the back.
And you'll see on the maps you have a purple area and this purple area is Zone B and this green area is Zone A. The Zone B area is Denison to the east and the county to the south and then the area around the airport. And if you look on your matrix, compatibility matrix, this will give you Zone A what is prohibited uses and Zone B the prohibited uses. And if you were, I think our property in there is, part of it's residential, but part of it is non-residential. Redrill or Caterpillar will be the non-residential area and it gives you specifications on how you can develop the land there. Some of the prohibited uses would be theaters, auditoriums, stadiums, waterways that create a bird hazard, hazards to flight. And also the FAA airspace review requires objects not over 100 feet tall there in that area. So this would be regulated by the zoning department if there's any development in that area.
Just to conclude, the intent of the whole thing is to make sure that heat development's compatible with the airport. If you look at other communities in Texas that have developed close and adjacent to airports, they always complain about the noise even if the airport was there for a long, long time. So the intent of this is to be proactive with development.
The planning and zoning review is recommending approval and staff's recommending approval and Mr. Shaheen is here to answer some questions.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak to or against this? There being none, the public hearing's closed. Questions from council? Motion.
Mayor, I know we've been talking about this for quite some time now. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Beck, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 5A, public hearings on 2900 Block of Lloyd Lake Road. Ms. Brockin.
Mayor and council, we're here tonight to receive a report, hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance for a change in zones from single-family 7.5 to multifamily 2 district. For property of Adner Fox survey and Spencer Rice survey containing 11.25 acres submitted by Herschel Hogenson and Site Development and Chip Piazza, Piazza Investment Group. Mr. Piazza would like to construct approximately 200 one-to-two-bedroom apartment complex. Site plan has been submitted. The property will have 420 parking spaces, the buildings will be two and three stories high. A recreational center is shown with a pool and retain on. The complex will be fenced and have an entrance and exit off of Lloyd Lake Road in Lillis to the west. Property to the north is developed in family residence. The building is set back across from Parkmore and the property line will have a screen fence constructed at the developer's expense. Also, screen fence is required around the residence facing Lloyd Lake Road. Property will have an entrance and exit that's gated. We notified 18 property owners, we had nine approvals and two, we had nine disapprovals and two approvals. The reasons for disapproval were increased traffic, crime, drugs, devalue their property and noise increase. The planning and zoning considered this and they decided to recommend approval. Staff is recommending approval as it meets the criteria in the land use plan for multifamily which says that the track is close to a major thoroughfare. It is a small scale development and it's neighborhood oriented. The track is less than 20 units per acre, it's like 17.8 and no access through the local streets like Brenda and Jerry, there's not even access there, there's evidence. The planning and zoning is recommending approval and staff's recommending approval. We did calculate the land area, there was 18.67 acres total notification. There was 3.37 acres which would equal to 20% and a total of 2.73 acres for disapproval. So it did not meet the 6/7 criteria, only majority though.
This is a public hearing and I know we have several that want to speak to this. We're going to start with Mr. Piazza.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Chip Piazza, the developer and first off, I would like to basically say this project was spawned by what we've seen as a need in the community. We obviously feel like we're addressing the need that's already there and it comes down to finding a suitable site. We did our investigation and we feel like this is the best site available that we could possibly find in Denison. Like Fay said, it's a 200 unit apartment. It will either meet or exceed all the city requirements as far as codes. We feel like it's going to be a positive thing for the community, not a negative thing and it will obviously add to the tax base at Denison. The project value is probably somewhere between 12 and 13 million based on the 200 units. Other than that, I did bring my civil engineer who can speak about more specific details. I know there's lots of concerns with regards to, you know, how it's going to impact water, sewer, stormwater, those things. So if you all don't have any, if you have any questions for me, otherwise I'll turn it over to Mr. Gilbig, the engineer.
Do we have any, are there any questions for Mr. Piazza before we talk about drainage with the engineer?
Sure.
After we get done.
Thank you very much. My name is David Gilbig, my address is 10132 Monroe Drive, Dallas, Texas. I'm civil engineer on the project and at the P&amp;Z hearing, there was a lot of concern about the drainage and the site actually drains in several different directions. Majority of it drains over to the west through Herschel Hogenson's property and we're going to create an easement so it will be able to enter onto his property. There's also a portion of it that drains to the south across Lloyd Lake Road. The drainage facilities downstream probably will handle the increased drainage, but just to be on the safe side, we're recommending a detention basin that way. It'd be a very small one, it will be a detention basin, it will not be a pond, it will not hold water except during the heaviest of rains. And then back to the east, there is an area that drains on the remainder of this property, back that direction and there's an existing drainage system in Lloyd Lake that's picking that up and we're not adding to any of that drainage. We happy to answer any questions.
One question, when you talk about a basin, so that would be a concrete?
No, it'll be a grassed basin, very easy side slopes. It will only have water, it will fill up and empty in about 90 minutes during the heaviest of rains. So it's almost never any water there.
And can you explain how that water will get to the south side of Lloyd Lake Road?
We will put a new pipe across Lloyd Lake Road there.
Into the drainage?
Into the drainage ditch on the south side.
Other questions?
And I've spoken to Mr. Harrington about this, so he's aware of it.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. We have Ms. Julie Engel here. Name an address, please, for?
My name is Julie Engel and I live at 2030 Brenda and I'm texting my husband in three minutes too.
That's fine and I guess for the rest of the crowd, before she speaks, I know we have several people that want to speak, if you have something new to add that she doesn't cover, we certainly want to hear from you. If it's going to be some of the same, then you always can reserve your rights to not speak if she's eloquently spoken for you, which I think she will have, so.
My husband and I have lived in our home for 15 years, for seven years as renters and half our eight years as owners. When we bought our house, our realtor informed us that the land adjacent to our property would be developed into homes and we paused and thought, what do we really want to live here? And we decided that we love our neighborhood, particularly the trees and the land. We decided that even if there were homes, that would be fine, they would be our new neighbors, that we would get to become friends with them and get to know them. Had we been told there would be an apartment complex erected next door, we would not have purchased our home. Apartment tenants are temporary, they're not members of the neighborhood, they're members of their own community or apartment complex. I only, you know, the fact that neighbors would be moving in and out all the time isn't even one of my major concerns. I only mention it to stress the fact that we in our neighborhood are long-term school and property tax paying homeowners and I doubt that many of us would have chosen our particular neighborhood to settle into had we known that our tranquility and our safety were temporary. A 200 unit apartment complex comes with parking lot lights, traffic noise and a general noise of 200 plus tenants, the majority of whom will most likely be young adults with the propensity to party. This past week, I've driven through three of the apartment complexes in Denison and two in Sherman during the day and during the evening. On the evenings, I drove through these complexes, I witnessed and heard quite a bit of partying. When I parked my car to just sit and listen at the Meadows Apartments on West Crawford, another neighborhood apartment community, I was frustrated to think that soon that same level of noise would be right next door to me. In fact, the noise level would be greater seeing as the proposed complex for my neighborhood is much larger than the Meadows. Additionally, while sitting at Heritage Park Apartments, I could not help but think, how would I shield the parking lot lights from my bedroom window? Noise and light pollution are not why I chose my neighborhood. Still, my most pressing concern is about safety. In talking with the police department, I was enlightened to the fact that the majority of service calls each month are to apartment complexes. Many of these calls are for domestic disputes and noise violations. However, there is an almost equal number of calls to apartments for theft. One member of the planning and zoning board said that the new apartments would be comparable to the Bridges and Sherman. Well, my son and daughter-in-law lived at the Bridges and Sherman for a year right after they were built and their car was broken into twice and their stolen property was never recovered. My husband and I love this town and we have the utmost respect and admiration for Herschel Hogenson. A couple of years ago, our severely disabled granddaughter who we are raising was granted a wish from the Wishing Well Text Center to have our two-car garage converted into a therapy room with a handicap accessible bathroom. Herschel Hogenson and his crew did most of the work free of charge. To begin the project, however, we had to obtain a variance from the Planning and Zoning Commission. At that meeting, the only question that was asked by the committee was what the outside of our house would look like after construction was complete. The board wanted assurance that the new look of our home would not compromise the integrity of our neighborhood. Well, I can assure you that a 200 unit, well-lit, noisy apartment complex that brings with it the likelihood of increased crime will most certainly compromise the integrity of our neighborhood. We are asking that you do not approve this proposal, a plan that will be a detriment to the safety and well-being of the citizens in our neighborhood.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Name an address, please.
My name is Kathy Smithson, I live at 2031 Jared and like this young lady, it will be right next door to me. I have two small children that stay at my house six days a week. They will not be safe in their own backyard ever again if this apartment complex goes in. I know it's supposed to have a screened fence. I have a fence, I have a chain link fence, it hasn't stopped anybody from coming over yet. I've been there two and a half years. If I had any idea that there was any chance that somebody put an apartment complex next door, I would say, uh-uh, there is no way. And if someone put houses there, fine, fantastic, houses are great, but duplexes there, I don't care, I'll help you. But an apartment complex, I don't want it in my neighborhood, I don't want it next door to my house, I don't want the crime, I don't want the drugs, I don't want the traffic, I don't want the noise, we don't want the construction, we don't want any of it. We also do not want to pay higher school property taxes when you have to go back in again and remodel Hyde Park Elementary which was just completed to contain the overflow of kids that are going to be there. With two-bedroom apartments, you're looking at between 200 and 800 people. There is no way that our neighborhood can handle that many people. Thank you.
Mr. Engel, do you?
I just relinquished my time.
She did a fine job. And then we have Ms. Betty Pecoraro. Name an address, please, for the record.
Betty Pecoraro, 2801 Regal Drive, Denison. And I would like, I'm here because of all of our neighbors around here. When the notices were sent out, they were only sent to people within 200 feet of this project and we understood that that was the people that could protest it. But later, when we came to a meeting down here nice Tuesday, we found out that we could get petitions against it and that it was a large amount, like from 4,000, 3,000, 4,000 on up, I cannot remember for sure, talked to the secretary. But anyway, and then we were under the impression that the meeting was going to be on Tuesday night, tomorrow night. And in fact, in Sunday's paper, there was a big article about it naming the date, Tuesday night, 6:00 PM.
If I could interject there, was that an article by the paper or the public notice that the city paid to post?
That is the article about the whole meeting.
There's an article on the paper, not the city notice.
The city noticed and the paper was correct?
City noticed was correct.
But everyone reads this. So there was a, really, that didn't leave us alone to get petitions up and, but we did try, two other ladies and I, and we do not have near 1,000 petitions signed against it. But we would like, if possible, to make a motion to table this project, the meeting on it and the decisions on it till at least the meeting in June and possibly we could reach a 3,000 mark or whatever by law it takes. Some of our main concerns, one of the largest concerns we have heard is that there's going to be many children walking to Hyde Park School. We all know Lloyd Lake Road, right around that curve, is very dangerous. We're very concerned for the children and the increased traffic which it will make. And we're also concerned about the crime rate found in the current apartment complexes in Denison and of course it will decrease the area property. So we are, I am speaking for, and if y'all need the petitions that have been signed, if you want them on record, I can give them, give you what we have. But we would like for you to consider post putting, is to give us more time. Thank you very much.
And if you hand the petitions, please, to the city manager. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda item because it's not been covered? There being none, the public hearing's closed. And we understood that that was the people that could protest it. But later, when we came to a meeting down here in Nice Tuesday, we found out that we could get petitions against it and that it was a large amount, like from 4,000, 3,000, 4,000, I cannot remember for sure, talked to the secretary. But anyway, and then we were under the impression that the meeting was going to be on Tuesday night, tomorrow night. And in fact, in Sunday's paper, there was a big article about it naming the date, Tuesday night, 6:00 PM.
If I could interject there, was that an article by the paper or the public notice that the city paid to post?
That is the article about the whole meeting.
There's an article on the paper, not the city notice.
Okay, the city notice and the paper was correct.
City notice was correct.
But everyone reads this. So there was a, really, that didn't leave us alone to get petitions up. And, but we did try, two other ladies and I. And we do not have near 1,000 petitions signed against it. But we would like, if possible, to make a motion to table this project, the meeting on it and the decisions on it till at least the meeting in June. And possibly we could reach a 3,000 mark or whatever by law it takes. Some of our main concerns, one of the largest concerns we have heard is that there's going to be many children walking to Hyde Park School. We all know Lloyd Lake Road, right around that curve, is very dangerous. We're very concerned for the children and the increased traffic, which it will make. And we're also concerned about the crime rate found in the current apartment complexes in Dennison. And of course, it will decrease the area property. So we are, I am speaking for, and if y'all need the petitions that have been signed, if you want them on record, I can give them, give you what we have. But we would like for you to consider post-putting is to give us more time. Thank you very much.
I give you and the petitions, please, to the city manager. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda item, something that's not been covered? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Based on the comments made at Planning and Zoning, council has staff to really be prepared to address some of those concerns from a city perspective. I guess I'll start with Mr. Howerton on the drainage. I know you visited with the engineer. You feel like the engineering plan and everything meets your requirements? And I know we historically had terrible drainage issues down Easy Street as a result, so I guess if you could speak to that.
For this particular site, the, as Mr. Vilbig said, Vilbig said it does drain several different directions. And the location of this development was purposely set so that it would not rain to the east. And there's some interior piping to drain all of the runoff through the detention basin. And it will take away the peak of the storm such that downstream structure will not be damaged. But there is an unapproved section to the east, which was the cause of the great concerns in the past. And Easy Street is a target area for which we're keeping an eye. And we're doing everything that we can at staff level to protect that, and that's what we've done in this particular project.
Okay. Questions for Dan? All right, Chief Birch, I know that, you know, we hear a lot about the concerns of crime, and I know that you've gone and done some research on that as well.
Yes, sir. In my experience, I've lived in four cities, been a police officer in four cities. And all I can go by is the history that I've seen in the communities I've served in. Gated communities, whether it's a gated, single-family residential or multifamily residential, tend to have a significantly reduced crime rate. Doesn't mean they don't have crime, they do. Fences, as one of the speakers alluded to, don't stop people that want to get over your fence, whether you live in a, again, a multifamily or single-family. Traffic could be a problem. We've researched accidents at the intersections close by, and they're not out of the ordinary. Certainly with more traffic, there's certainly more potential for accidents. I guess the main point is, and of course, the police are there to serve our community and do whatever we need to do regardless of whether, of what type of residence it is. But for a gated community, again, we just don't see the crime rates near what we do with other apartment complexes that are wide open and easily accessible.
Questions? With the comment about traffic, about increased traffic, Mr. Hannity, can you walk through that as far as what the procedure would be? Traffic impact study, what that's going to look like to give some assurance of what?
There was a, yes, there was a traffic impact study that was done when Mr. Hogenson built his commercial development on Lloyd Lake. We would examine that to see if another traffic impact study was justified. You'd have to look, just look at the parameters of that particular study. If it was justified, the developer would be required to complete a traffic impact study to determine the impact of what that road, that development would have. And then at that point in time, the road section design would be incorporated to address the impacts that were identified. I think Chief Birch has done some background work on Lloyd Lake as it intersects with 75, Hyde, and Coffin, and Easy Street. And I think that goes back a couple of years. And Chief, could you just speak briefly to the frequency of those accidents? In your opinion, are they out of the line or high for a particular area?
We look back from now, back through 2011. Get to my starting place here. And, for example, in 2012, Lloyd Lake and 75, we had two minor accidents. Lloyd Lake and Coffin, we had one minor accident. Lloyd Lake and Easy Street, we had two minor accidents. Lloyd Lake and Hyde Park, we had none. So that was five minor accidents for 2012. In 2011, Lloyd Lake and 75, we had three major accidents and four minor accidents. And Lloyd Lake and Coffin, we had none. Lloyd Lake and Easy Street, we had one minor accident. Lloyd Lake and Hyde Park, we had one minor accident. So for the 2011, total were three majors and six minors. Major accidents classified as injuries, where there's injuries in the accident. And 2013, only Lloyd Lake and 75 have had accidents reported, one major accident and seven minors. None of the other intersections noted had any. So a total for the four intersections for all, for 2013 and then all of 2011 and '12, we had four major accidents and 18 minor accidents. And as I mentioned earlier, that doesn't appear to be substantially large numbers or something, or numbers that we would, I guess, take further action with in those particular areas from a police perspective.
Good questions for the chief? Thank you.
Yes, Chief. From a perspective of a population density within an apartment complex of, say, 200 families versus that same family unit in a residential area, even if that unit is gated, is there, do you have any data that would support a crime tendency for crime at a higher rate or equal rate?
Nothing documented I can, if you want me to research that, we certainly can.
Does your experience suggest, does your career experience suggest one way or the other?
If it were to be an open access apartment complex, yes, there's a significant difference. You see that when it comes in, just because people are going out in all different directions. Again, my experience with gated communities is we just don't see that much of an impact. There's certainly domestics, there's domestics in single families as well. We don't see an uptick in domestics necessarily from apartments. The drug activity, since the access is limited, we usually don't see quite as much activity. But again, that's a, that's, that certainly can happen. With apartment complexes gated or ungated, I think the only thing we really see much of can be car burglaries, because those are, there's, people go where there's more vehicles. And so there could be an uptick there, but again, being gated, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect to see a major uptick.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Chief Elton? I know, I know one thing is, when the development was done, I guess with the recent wide, right there, the recent widening of Lloyd Lake Road, you've looked at that, and that's obviously going to be required for the portion of your property basically to be widened as, like, what's there today on the part that's been developed? Does that, does that round?
Correct. Across the frontage of our property along Lloyd Lake Road, it'd just more or less be a continuation of what you see at the inside development that Herschel developed. If you notice, the north part of the road has been increased, probably in order of 10 feet. I'm not sure what it is, but it's to the city specifications. But that, that will continue to our property corner, or the limits of our property corner.
Mr. Piaz, there were several comments, and I guess as more assurance for me and for some of the folks who went, folks were mentioning Heritage Park and the Meadows as comparisons to this project. And obviously, if you were, you know, projecting to build something like Meadows, there's, on Crawford, there's no way that I would consider voting for that. So tell us what's different between your project and a project like that. Give us, give us a rundown of what you're expecting. Obviously, with a 12, 13 million dollar project, this should, this should be substantially nicer than any of the, in either of those complexes that they talk about.
We would certainly hope to think so. It is not a Section 8 housing, not that there's anything wrong with Section 8 housing, but the demographics for apartment dwellers in the $90 a square foot, I think that's, that's what we're sort of proving up right now, so.
So they'd be a rent of runway?
Well, you know, if you had 1,000 square feet, we'd be approaching $1,000, so. And in order to achieve that, you have to put in fairly nice amenities to draw that crowd, to be able to pay that extra money. They can justify it how they want. But the amenities are going to have to be a big part of this development.
And when you say it's not Section 8, you're saying there's no government subsidy to rent?
That's correct.
No income-based subsidy for you to rent these units to individuals?
Correct. We're going conventional financing.
Can you describe your screening across the back of the, I guess, north end of the complex? There's some sun there, the screening, whiteout screening, lighting, stuff like that. I know some of our requirements require different types of lighting, indoor cam lighting, stood direction, what understanding, what deals. What's your screening going to be?
Well, to be honest with you, we're just speaking in generalities, you know, just meeting the requirements. I can't tell you specifically. We haven't gotten to that far into the details. But I can tell you that, you know, it will, as I understand it, it does not currently require these types of properties to be screened at all. This is something we're doing to sort of appease the community and help this project along. But we are entertaining, you know, a solid screen. That makes more sense, but.
It is required between residential and non-residential.
Okay, well, I stand corrected, but.
Six-foot wood or nice masonry or some kind of timber?
It sounds like it's a pretty substantial screen wall, you know, a six-foot solid.
Hold on, I can't hear y'all. Only I can hear you, Mr. Piazza. I like to hear it. Thank you.
Okay. I had to ask you about what kind of screening there was and is what would they require.
Not just you. I hadn't been able to hear anybody, Mr. Howerton, or whatever name it was I go, or, I can't hear you people. You need to talk into your microphone or turn them up.
Other questions?
On the exterior, what are you planning for exterior finish on this apartments?
Right now, it stands to be masonry. And I think the city has a zoning ordinance or a requirement in the neighborhood of 80% or 75%.
75% masonry?
Yes.
And the balance would be apartmenture?
Well, hardy board apparently achieves the masonry standard, so it would be hardy board as well.
So the 75% would be most likely hardy board?
Not entirely, no.
So kind of give me a breakdown on how much brick, stone versus?
Generally, you know, the lower level you'd want in some kind of stone or brick veneer, and then you'd progress up to hardy board, which does meet the requirement as far as a masonry classification. But that's the general intent at this time, is to have a mix.
Do you have any elevation drawings with you here?
No, sir. We've got some conceptual stuff that we, we took off of another project we really liked and would basically use that concept, although that's not the exact elevations. But it gives you the idea and concept or feel of the project.
And this is going to be, you are going to maintain this as a gated community, is that correct?
Yes. That's one of the amenities we're going to offer.
And ballpark rental prospects, what are you looking at for these units?
You're talking about per unit? They break it down to, on a square foot basis. So if you're looking at a, you know, 650 square foot single bedroom, you'd be in the $650 a month rent. And then there's, you know, there's different kinds of upgrade if you pull aside, or if you want covered parking, or, you know, different things that are added on.
What's your elevation going to be in those back units? Are they three-story or two-story, or how's your plan?
Well, the concept is to put the two-story around the perimeter and put the three-story on the interior units.
Do you have a management company that you're going to use to manage the apartments? So what's your experience of being looking?
That is the initial plan, and then we'll progress into taking on that role ourselves over time. But at least for the first year and possibly the second year.
So you have, you got somebody identified for that?
There's several companies. You can go online and find several. My concept is to interview probably some of the local ones that are already doing, the ones in Sherman. But we do have rental experience, though, personally.
Apartment rental?
Mostly commercial and retail.
Mr. Piaz, if you would speak to, I mean, I think this council understands the need that through our economic development summits, through talking with all of our major employers, including the school district and the hospital and Caterpillar, they for years have said that when they recruit families or young professionals or professionals into the area, that they all live in Sherman to this very issue, not from a, from a lack of rental properties, but from a lack of nice rental properties. You know, to subject, I think we've heard that tonight, that apartments go hand in hand with crime, I think is not fair. Particularly, I would say that there's many people that have lived in apartments through their professional career at different times that are certainly law-abiding citizens. But can you speak to what brings you to want to invest $13 million in Dennison? What, what is the need that you, your market research, your needs assessment that says, you know, this is a need?
Well.
It's not every day, as we recall, as Dennison is moving forward, that people come and say, let me drop a $13 million check. So if you would speak to that.
Well, I think you've touched on it, you know, we've all been in the market for rental at some point in our lives, or at least the majority of us. What Dennison currently has to offer, in my opinion, is very, very limited. One of the nicer ones has a waiting list, to my knowledge, and has and currently does. Dennison has the need, it just doesn't have any opportunities for people to find. And I think that's pretty consistent, that you'll see if you ask random people. You know, you've got Wood Creek, you've got Crete Moore, and then you've got the Heritage, probably the three largest ones. To my knowledge, you know, they pretty much are probably in a 95% occupancy. And the demographic research that I've done, you know, says the market, that there is definitely a need in the market in the demographics in the future. I'm afraid that you're going to see even more developers move in over the course of time, just trying to meet that need. And you don't engage a project like this unless you've done your homework, obviously. This is a substantial project, excuse me, for anybody, so you definitely want to make sure you've got your research in your back pocket and you're ready to roll. I don't know what to tell you, other than it's something that has my confidence and several people that I know are, you know, confident in it to the point that they're ready to put up money as a limited partner.
Mr. Piaz, is it your intent long-term to own this long-term? This will be a project that you'll have for, for years?
Yes, it is. You know, I'm from the area. I'm, you know, and most of the properties that I have and do own in Dennison, you know, I take very well care of. I take pride in owning them, and that is the plan.
Mr. Piaz, could you speak to the amenities of the apartment and what's going to make this, say, a cut above the standard apartment?
Well, usually the amenities consist of the leasing office and what the leasing office has to offer, which is usually, you know, a small gym, you know, changing rooms to support the pool, and then somewhat of a clubhouse room where tenants can rent for occasions that they may, you know, to host parties or birthdays or anniversaries, whatever. And then a really nice pool area. That's probably the biggest attraction that these things can offer is, you know, a nice recreation area around the pool with, you know, some cover and place to barbecue and relax. And I think the city does require a small playground.
Can you, can you speak to the lighting that seems to be an issue with some of the neighbors?
Really, I can't. I mean, I obviously, I'm. I mean, I obviously understand what their concerns are. And then we have to be sensitive to that, and then we have to be sensitive to what the tenants' needs are as far as, you know, coming home at night and not wanting to get to their apartment in the dark. So there's got to be some kind of a balance there, but I understand their need, but I also understand the needs of the tenants, too.
And Mr. Councilor Goddard, if I could just read from the zoning ordinance for multifamily zoning districts. All parking areas shall have appropriate lighting and shall be positioned such that...
Excuse me, Robert, can you speak up, please?
Sure. This is from the zoning ordinance, and so it's the requirements, it's the rules that these apartments have to be constructed under. And this specifically addresses Councilor Goddard's question about lighting. All parking areas shall have appropriate lighting and shall be positioned such that no light adversely impacts adjacent residential areas. There is an art to this, but it can be done. I've seen it done in other communities, and there's no reason why we couldn't do it in Denison as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
There being no other comments? Are there any other comments? Yes, sir.
You're going to have firewalls in between the units? Sprinkler systems?
Yes.
And fire hydrants around?
Mr. Jackson, would you come forward, please, our building inspections?
I've been a fireman for thirty-two years, and I've been in a lot of park fires.
Can you speak to the requirements of the fire requirements in these type of new constructions?
Yes, sir. They'll all require fire sprinkler systems, as well as firewalls between the units.
Hydrants, all that.
Hydrants. Those will be determined by the fire department, yes, they will be.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, Miss Engle, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to also...
Please come forward.
We aren't opposed to apartments. I mean, I've lived in an apartment, my children have lived in apartments. We're not opposed to apartments. We're opposed to these apartments being right next door. This is a very large property. There's no reason for it to be right next door. Plus, there's land right there on seventy-five that's just worse out. But my comment that I was going to make is, I don't know if you're familiar with Lakewood Apartments in Sherman? They're horrible. They're rundown, and the starting rent for a one-bedroom apartment is six-hundred-and-fifteen dollars a month. So six-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month is not an upscale apartment. It's not in line with the Bridges, which is what it's been compared to. The starting rent at the Bridges for a one-bedroom apartment is eight-hundred dollars a month. So...
Ms. Denison, one other comment.
She mentioned Lakewood and Sherman. I'll say that I did live in Lakewood for five months. When I lived there, there was one murder, one rape, and two drug arrests within three units of where I lived. But my question was, why was it only two-hundred-foot from the complex that were notified of this? Why such a small area? Because I heard her say that we didn't meet the requirements. Why was such a small area? Wasn't it a lot larger area than that when the liquor store and stuff went in?
Hey, can you speak to that?
No, we're required under site law to notify, to, within two-hundred-foot radius of the property that is requesting to be... So it would just be two-hundred-foot.
It just doesn't seem to me that as much impact as it's going to have on the entire neighborhood, that two-hundred-foot's enough. That's just barely three houses. That's just not enough.
I have no comment. Thank you. Any other comments? Public hearing's closed. Question and discussion with council.
Mayor, this is certainly an issue where I could certainly see both sides of the fence. My mother lives very close to this complex. I contacted her, you know, just to get her thoughts, and I used to live very close to this as well. You know, and I am very sensitive to that. I do have tremendous amount of faith in Mr. Piazza as far as his construction capabilities. He gives me great comfort to know that he'll own these long-term, being a construction business, and I know they'll be well-built, be well-kept. You know, so I see the extreme benefit for our community, especially when you're talking about that level of commitment to Denison, twelve, thirteen million dollars. We know that, we've talked about it large and ad nauseam about the need to get young professionals into our community. I know Sherman did a study some years ago that talked about needing two thousand rental units over the next ten years. So we lose, and I'm going to probably get this number not quite right, but I know we lose about sixty percent of even the new hires that are hired in Denison, our employers move to Sherman because we have such a housing shortage, both, and a lot of those folks are looking for rental units. From that standpoint, the... So I really, I'm really excited that somebody is willing to put that kind of, I mean, we haven't had an apartment complex built. Part of the issue, I think, for some of the perception on this, is we haven't had an apartment complex built in, I mean, how many years? What's the newest complex we've got that's not Section 8 house?
Heritage.
Heritage. The Heritage is Section 8. So what's the last non-Section 8 house? And what year was that built? You know, I mean, the fact we haven't had a new apartment complex built since nineteen-eighty-eight, you know, that's difficult for a community of our size to continue to grow and recruit young professionals. My wife and I spent time in four different apartment complexes when, you know, when we were first starting out, and we were certainly law-abiding citizens and had many friends there and all that. So, you know, something we should really consider.
Other questions from council? Comments? I, too, remember the Oaks Apartments next to the McDaniel Middle School, as I was raised at the street just next to that. And, you know, and we see those apartments today simply from a lack of proactive maintenance. And so those professionals that we've been mentioning can't live here. To the comment that Hyde Park Elementary School may grow as a result of this, we can only hope. My kids go there. My mother taught there for twenty-five years, and that's what we're about. This council and our community is trying to move forward, and moving forward is growing. And, you know, at every decision, every decision that this council makes has an impact. And sometimes the best decision for the entire community is not always what is perceived to be the best decision for some. I drive that route every day. I mean, I don't live right next to it, I live close to it. But I do understand the concerns, and we've hopefully, staff, we've asked staff to chase this, we've asked staff to come prepared tonight, to really be able to speak to that, and I think they've done that well. But again, we're trying to address issues in this community that simply haven't been, and that's the lack of housing. And this is one opportunity to do that, in my opinion. Other comments? Motion for council.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning request.
Second motion?
I have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Spindel, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number five, B, zoning for commercial property, 2900 Block of Will Oak Road, Ms. Brockett.
Mayor and council, we're here tonight to receive a report. All the public hearing is considering the ordinance for changes of single-family seven-point-five to commercial district, property on the Abden Fox survey, containing one-point-four-four-two acres planned through the Herschel Homes and Inside Development Center, and Chip Piazza investment grew fire, 2900 Block of Will Oak Road. Mr. Piazza, we'd like to market the property for commercial uses. The property to the west is zoned commercial. The land use plan recommends local retail. We identified four property owners. We had one approval and no disapprovals. PNC has recommended approval and the staff's recommended protest.
This is the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to or against this agenda item?
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This property is adjacent to the one that we were just the subject of the conversation, and it backs up to what is Herschel's property right now, which is a commercial development. So I thought it lent itself really well just to sit on that quarter as you lead into this apartment, and that's really what the request is, just to change it to retail.
Do you have any leads at all yet?
Not at this time, obviously. Once we get the project under way, we think that will create some synergy for some interest on that, you know. I can't tell you what it will be, but, you know, I sort of foresaw like a doctor's office, dentist's office, something along that line. Thank you.
Something more retail-based? Mr. Piazza, some territory sales tax?
I have no opposition to that.
Other questions? There being none, the public hearing's closed. Motion for council.
Next motion, approve the request to change to retail.
I have a motion from Councilman Spindel, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries forward. Move on to five C. Mr. Helkinson, when you were here a few months ago, you know, we encourage you to continue to bring more folks to the table, and you've done that, and just keep working. We're going to grow Denison together. Agenda item number five, C, public hearing, Ms. Brockett.
Mayor and council, we're here tonight to receive a report. All the public hearing is considering the ordinance for amendment to Chapter 28, zoning Article Four Use Regulations, Section twenty-four point four-nine, by deleting headcode manufactured home in single-family five zoning district with a conditional use permit, by deleting reference in Section twenty-eight point three-two point one, yard requirements for individual lots, by deleting reference to minimum lot size for use of such homes in the single-family five district in Section twenty-eight point three-two point three F. This change would allow headcode manufactured homes to be placed in manufactured home subdivisions and manufactured home parks only. This prevents a manufactured home on a vacant lot in a single-family five district. Also existing homes would become non-conforming uses and only be allowed to be remodeled but not replaced or expanded. All vacant lots currently zoned but not occupied would lose its conditional use permit, which includes removal of manufactured homes or destruction. All manufactured homes on lots zoned, single-family five with conditional use permits are considered non-conforming uses and are subject to the regulations in Section twenty-eight nine of Chapter twenty-eight, which describes the non-conforming uses. Planning and zoning recommends approval and staff-written approvals ordinance.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing's closed.
I'm sure if you understood.
Right. Robert, this was a result of some action in recent history, right? But in summary, basically, we are saying that to put a manufactured home, you need to put it in the existing zoned areas.
That's correct. Either a home, a park, or as Fay said, a district specifically designed for that, which we have a category in our zoning ordinance that requires, that allows for that, we also have existing zoning districts established.
So basically, this would prevent the one-offs that go here and there from even making application.
That's correct.
That's the summed-up version.
Mayor, I'll make most approve.
Let me close the public hearing. Easy now. The public hearing is now closed.
Mayor, I'll make most approve.
Motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Mallory, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Good change. Thank you, staff, for bringing that back. Agenda item number five, D, five-thirty, unsafe structures.
Mayor and council, tonight we have three properties that we would like for you to consider for demolition. The first slide shows a map of the three properties. The first one is at six-thirty-one West Bullock, and this is a frontal view of the property. The next slide shows the rear side portion of the property. It is open. This is the roof, shows that the roof is in bad shape. The next shows that the foundation of this property is not in very good shape as well. So based on that, the fact that it is open, it's an attractive business for vagrants and children, and that we do have structural issues because of the roof, we would recommend that you order demolition of this property. The next one is at six-twelve West Johnson. This is a frontal view of this property. This is a section of the rear of the property. The next slide, it's a little difficult to see, but one of the items within the ordinance states that if you drop a plumbing down through from the top of the wall, that the bottom of the wall has to fall within the middle third of the wall, or the bottom of the plumbing line falls within the middle third of the wall. This wall juts out probably a foot, foot and a half towards the outside of the building, and we've been working with the homeowner on this for about two years now, and we've come to a standstill, and this is a problem. This shows the rear of the building as well. Because of this problem with the leaning walls, the issues with the roof, we're recommending that you approve the demolition of this property as well. The next slide is at five-thirty West Elm. This is another property. We may have someone here tonight. They did pull a permit, began working on this property. However, we still have some problems with the foundation. As you can see, you know, that's not the best slide in the world, but you can see that if you look hard on that one, that we do have a problem where that particular structural member is not straight. It's leaning from in the middle. It's broken. And then the next slide shows that we still have some deteriorated stumps that are still there for support of the foundation. They've come back and used some wood, which they should not have used the wood, they should have used some type of material that was not decalable, such as the CMU block or some other material of that type. So as you can see that to the right of the red arrow, the wood that's been put in there. And then this also shows some areas on the outside of the building, in the rear, where we have some decay, and this is another area where that portion of the wall has jetted out and does not comply with the requirement for the plumbing to fall within the middle third of the bottom of the wall. Based on those items, we would recommend that the council approve this house for demolition as well.
Mr. Jackson, I see a lot of new lumber. So who's working on it? The homeowner?
They did come in, pulled a permit. Our comment to them was, prior, our process today is that if they pull a permit, that it doesn't stop the demolition process. We continue to go on to council because we've had so many that pulled permits and used that more or less as a stall tactic for us not to proceed with this project, with the demolition. So what we've done now is we've gone ahead and proceeded on with it. So what we've done now is we've gone ahead and proceeded on with the demolition. If they come to the council meeting and the council chooses to give them extra time to complete that work, then that's the council's call, and we would proceed on with that. But we didn't take it upon ourselves to pull it off of the demolition list and stop the process from going to the council as we had in the past.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to any of these three properties? There being none, the public hearing's closed. Mr. Jackson, did you say the one property owner was here?
We understood that he was going to be here of this house, this last house, at five thirty West Elm.
Okay.
Don't see that.
Not here. Okay. Motion for council?
Motion to approve demolition.
I have a motion from Councilman Brockett, second from Councilman Mallory. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And I don't know, seven, executive session. The council now convenes the executive session pursuant to chapter five five one Texas Government Code to contemplate pending litigation pursuant to chapter five five one dot zero seven one, to have discussion regarding possible purchase, exchange, lease of real property pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven two, and to discuss personnel matters pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven four. The time is seven eleven P M.